Can we please observe a moment of silence to honor the people who stand guard inside and outside our borders to protect and serve? Would you please stand for the pleasure of the legislature?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which was established, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steve Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hope Morris.
Here.
Larry Clark.
Here.
Adrian Sandoval.
Here.
Kim Nelson.
Here.
Michael Kellper.
Troy Blum.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. If someone would be so kind as to...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda if you can.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, audience participation. Paul Horstman, please. Take your name, address, and...
Paul Horstman, 711 Rogers Circle. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tammy Ford, for listening. I have a question on Highway, what we call Highway Subdivision 85, which is Circle Boulevard and County Road 23 and 1/2. I've lived there for seventeen, seventeen years now, and what the town did to the road over there by redoing it is beautiful. It's nice. The road is a little closer to the sidewalk now. I've been working with Carl and also Troy. We've talked on different occasions, and it's turned into a racetrack. And there's been a lot of people that's coming around that corner and driving as fast as they can toward the Sewer Lagoon and that stop sign and vice versa, coming back in. And there's houses all along that whole entire side of that road and the sidewalk and the greenway, and kids use it a lot. And I kind of did a little survey of the town, went around town. I get a Stevens Circle, there's three speed limit signs in there, Bell Vista has six, and Reed Subdivision has five. My subdivision inside my subdivision has zero. No, no speed limit whatsoever inside my subdivision. I have one child playing sign that, as you're first coming into the subdivision, on a bent post behind a pine tree. And Carl's been out there. I talked to one of Carl's officers that gave a 60 mile an hour speed ticket out there on that, on that stretch of road. Main Street, Grand Avenue, and Circle Boulevard are the only three streets in this town to have a 30 mile an hour or higher speed limit. And, because this changes to 35 out here, this changes to 35, this direction. Out on County Road 23 and 1/2 that comes in by the Sewer Lagoon here, it goes 55, 45, and then takes an abrupt drop to 25. And then it does that all the way past the Sewer Lagoon. There's a Sewer Lagoon on one side and a field on the other, up until a stop sign before you get to the stop sign that leads into Mr. Kellper's subdivision. It's all 25 mile an hour. And the article has 25 mile an hour speed limit signs all around the whole entire building. And all the roads leading in and around it are all 25. And my proposal is to the town is I'd like to see that stretch of road and Grand Avenue dropped to at least 25, if not 20, mile an hour. I don't think there's anywhere in this town people need to go in that big a hurry that they need to drive. And it's like I talked to Carl, you know, it's just like on the highway. You post 75, people think they gotta drive 85. Maybe if we drop it, maybe we can get the people to start slowing down a little bit. I know he's had that little machine out there that's been keeping data on that. He did it for one week or so. And, I mean, there's been some 15 mile an hour speed limits broke. They've been going over about 15 mile an hour. But it seems like when they're out there, everything's fine. As soon as they leave, it becomes a racetrack again. And me, myself, and my subdivision, I have what I call the gang of Mustangs. I don't know what is going on there, but what they seem to know when the police are there and when they're not. And I was talking to Carl. I have, I've had one spinning cookies in the middle of where they turn to come into our subdivision. They spin cookies, they race up and down that all the time, and on the weekends, it's just a pain in the rear. I mean, there's motorcycles and trucks, and it seems like the more the oil field starts picking up, you can kind of judge by watching. Like, I'm out there all the time, and I'm around town all the time, because I, I go to the school when the school's in, I go down there three, four times a day, so I see a lot when I'm out. And this, the oil well trucks, I was telling Carl, I was talking to Troy, I think it was, I had a truck, I couldn't tell if it was an A and W, A and W water truck, because it didn't have markings, but it had the tank, pass me on that road because he didn't think I was going fast enough. I watched another vehicle pass two pickups in the turning lanes going down that road, and you know he had to be going well over 60, 70 mile an hour to do so, before he got to the stop sign. And I just think that's too fast. We gotta park there now. We're gonna have a dog park or another park, I don't know what that's gonna be, but... And with all those houses on that side of the road, I would just like to see it drop and get changed to, to match all the other subdivisions in town, and hopefully slow some people down. I know I've seen on Roger Streets, fence there's been knocked down probably three or four times since I've lived there from people coming around the corner and knocking, or driving through his fence. But I say the road's beautiful. I mean, it's, it looks good. I enjoy driving on it. I hate, you know, that bouncy corner that used to be there, but now that it's widened and it's nice new pavement, even the big oil trucks and everything, there, nobody's slowing down, they're just flying around that corner. I'm just waiting for one of them to come out in somebody's backyard and kill somebody's kids. That's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. We, we'll take that under advisement. We, we understand there's been a lot of complaints. Every time we fix a road, it becomes the next drag strip.
Yeah. Well, I was talking to Troy there. I went to Boulder, and I called them this afternoon, because I was talking to Carl about the photo radars that they have, and he didn't know if they should have to be posted prior to, to you setting one up or whatever. According to Boulder, because I got caught by one in Boulder going up Boulder Canyon, and I asked him the question, are they supposed to post that prior so people have the knowledge that they are photo radared? And they said, if you go around the outskirts of Boulder, there are signs that say photo radar in use, and that's all they have to do. And they can send them on any street they want to. And I was going six mile an hour over the speed limit up Boulder Canyon and got a $50 fine for doing so. And I think if you guys got one for out here and a few places around town, you probably could pay for it in a couple weeks. But, thank you for listening. As I say, I hope we can drop it down. I'd like to see, like to see it all go to 25. I don't think, you know, you go to Milliken, it's, Main Street's 25, Johnstown's Main Street's 25. I don't know why we have to have 30 and 35 on our main streets and our kids and stuff like that. But I'm not gonna stay for the whole meeting, I talked to Troy. I hurt my back. I had a back injury a few years ago, but I was doing something with my Jeep top and hurt my back, so it's kind of hard for me to sit down for a long time, so...
We won't discuss it.
Maybe with that, we will discuss it. I'll probably get ahold of Troy or something. You can call me and let me know. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Does anybody else wish to address the board? Okay.
I, I'll just say.
Real quick, speak to your name and address.
Nick Ralston, 401 North Garden Court. Just wanted to say thank you for the paving job. It looks great. I know I talked to you a few days on the weekend there, but wanted to stand in the last, last minute just to tell everybody thank you. Really appreciate it. That's pretty much just what I want to tell you, everybody, so.
Thank you. Your turn, Tommy.
Oh, hey. Okay, next. Approval of the consent agenda. There's gonna, there's an amendment. We're gonna pull the SRO, IGA renewal, and put it down on the bottom of action items, which would be I. But the others are still in place, regular money, meeting minutes for May 16, 2017, cancellation of June 20th meeting, and addition of a June 27th meeting. It might get time.
Make a motion to...
Let me hear.
Second consent agenda as amended. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, action items. Public hearing on ordnance 746, an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Platteville approving the annexation of certain unincorporated territories in Weld County, Highway 66, Annexation Number One. So I, everybody, open the public hearing. Are we okay?
We can have one on...
We have, and I'd say we have one for...
On all of these ordinances, if you like. That might be the easiest way to do it. You can open it for all six, if you like. It's up to you.
Can I do that? Because I have to recuse myself on the second three.
Why would you, okay, that's a good, that's a good point. Why don't we do the first three?
Okay.
So 746, 747, and 748?
Okay, we'll do that. Open the public hearing on ordinances 746, 747, and 748. Mr. Rankin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm just Kendra, obviously, is Melissa, our town planner. As recall, a few months ago, the town accepted petition to annex State Highway 66 from essentially Division Boulevard at 66, west to County Road 21. Actually, it was 19th over, and go to 21, and we're filing a second petition next month to send to San Grand River. So we keep that one to six continued for Mr. Perry, for county engineer. This town has an order to most...
Good evening. I think, I was thinking about this. This is part of the reason this annexation is coming forward is because of the implementation of our call plan. We've talked a lot about that in the last few months, and the need to provide buffer between our community. So this is one of the steps that we are taking in order to implement that, that policy. So with that, this annexation is for the public right of way along State Highway 66. It's 24, almost 25 acres in area, and Troy mentioned where, where we start and where we end, so that's covered. The Town of Platteville is initiating the annexation with three petitions and three annexation maps, which are part of your background materials. Because it, this application is kind of unique, and that involves only public right of way, there's no private property. We did have that open house in April, April 11th, and we had people that were, we talked to a number of people, many of you did, but we didn't have anybody come forward with any property they wanted to add to it at this time. So what we have is the public right of way. And Kendra, the town attorney, as you know, she's, she, we were surprised when Milliken did this and they annexed public right of way. We learned from that, that the town annexes right of way without the property owner if they don't object. And in this case, it's CDO, as you know. And Troy spoke to Gloria Heiser-Eidler, who's the representative, and she indicated that they will not initiate the annexation or be a signatory, but they will also not object to the annexation. And they'll maintain the roadway without, that's a pretty good deal. So that's what we're doing tonight and why we're doing it. So there's no zoning that's associated with this application. And as you also know, this is really prescribed by the state statute, what we do with annexation. So the petitions were filed, and you passed a compliance resolution on April 4th that's required, and set the hearing dates for tonight. We, in the interim, completed an impact report that we filed with the county as required, so that was done, and all the publishing notices, there are four of them, that were required prior to getting here tonight, and all of that was completed. And we did have the open house, and we sent out mailings to all the adjacent property owners. That wasn't required, but we did it so that people would know and have an indication to annex if interested. We haven't had anybody object to the proposal at this point in time. So with that, we are recommending that the three ordinances favorably few may come to compliance with the state statute, having that those are required.
Okay. Do we have any thing to say about this? The, the audience?
I have a question for Carl. Will we, if there's an accident now in that area right now, aren't our police usually responding to it anyhow?
We would help, but it's maintained by Weld County, or still, we would go, but we, it's not ours, so we would go and assist, but that's it, right now.
Right now, but after we annex it?
After we annex it, it's all ours, which means in the wintertime, it's gonna have a huge increase of accidents.
That's something to think about, too, you know, the board, the additional burden that annexing these highways would put on our, our force.
I have a question. So will we go out to 21? Will that include 21, then? Would that make it, because right now, I believe it's Weld County's responsibility to maintain and plow County Road 21 from 66 over to 34.
Can you, can you come to the podium? Oh, sorry. We can get it on the record.
Sure. So my question was, would that give the Town of Platteville responsibility to maintain County Road 21 from 66 to 34? That's not part of the annexation?
It's just the right of way of State Highway 66, basically from ditch to ditch right of way.
Okay.
We consider going down 21, but we do not want to maintain another mile and a half stretch of road.
Okay. Well, that's what I was wondering, because if we were gonna annex that, I would suggest getting rid of Weld County, do a little work before we do.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all it adds.
Yeah.
Good point, good point. Does anybody else have anything on this? Yes, sir.
I'm Nick Silva. I live at 15409, 21 and 1/2. Will we be immune to any projects if CDO decides to widen the bridge or more lane in that annexation?
CDO would have sole authority over the right of way.
But will we have participation in those projects?
When, actually, I'm gonna bring up the, at a later part of this meeting, by the way I mentioned, the mayor and I have been in the State Highway 66 Coalition that was started a few months ago. And this last week, we attended the Upper Front Range meeting, which involved 66 Coalition 85 and all the communities in the Region Four of CDO, which is part of that. Part of the conversation is with Karen Snyder's with CDO, and we discussed improvements at County Road 21 specifically, so they somewhat matched the improvements made at 19 West. What people don't always know is from County Road 19 West on 66 to Dr. Cog, that's the potential region. 19 East is Upper Front Range. Karen indicated to me that they have a, a safety rating for County Road 21 at 66 that she and I are gonna talk about, and I'm gonna promote two of her front ranges to get those improvements funded. So the town will have some say so. We won't have authority over it, but we can definitely provide our opinion.
Yeah, I just wondered, for capital costs, if we might lose a bridge in a flood or...
Those are all CDO responsibilities. Absolutely. We don't want to take another bridge.
Yeah.
Answer my question.
Well, that one should last a while, though.
Yeah.
In that regard, Troy, nothing will change if it doesn't change in that.
No. The maintenance is solely, I met with Gloria last year, and actually, I knew this with me annexing now 66, this side to the bridge. They maintain all their responsibility, they're trying to maintain that. We pick up law enforcement responsibilities.
You know, I didn't really give that a lot of thought in law enforcement. During the normal course of accidents, probably not that big of a deal, but in the wintertime, during bad weather, I can see. Now, at an accident on 66 or 85, you're not gonna be the principal responder, are you?
After we annex it, yes. It's out.
You're the principal typically, I'm sorry, typically State Patrol assistant to tell you success.
But, but by the same token, we have been performing that function for years anyways. Which, this, now it'll be official, right?
Well, no, he, he said they will, that we assisted in previous, but it was responsibility of the county sheriff or the State Patrol.
CSP, yeah. Yeah, so after we annex it, it, it's all ours, and it's our expectation to respond to all these accidents.
So you may respond to help, you may respond to help, but reports and, is not your responsibility. And help is annexation.
Yeah, we're sort of there to render aid and to help and to get insurance information, but then we hand it over to CSP for Weld County, and, and after we annex it, it's all ours. There's, as we were talking about, there's a significant amount of accidents on 85. The month of April, 85 accidents, just on 85, and last month, 75. So 66 also, they widened it, and that's, that helps, but they're, we're, they're a significant, we didn't annex when we inherited that, which is okay, because we have been working, but maybe we can, leave out other officers on, whatever you have.
That could include speeding, right?
Yeah, so we can write citations now. Well, once the town next weekend, we can write citations or, or anything on that.
It'll be something considered, definitely discussed, and a bunch of preparation this fall. It's essentially six and a half miles across, maybe, state or federal highway. We, we have been responsible for 85, in part 60 up to County Road 38, but that's not as how the accident progressed. But I have all the statistics in my office from the Bell study. 85 corridor from Platteville to Fort Lupton is the highest traffic impacted, impacted on 85, Commerce City appears.
Really?
And from County Road 22 to Fort Lupton has a high degree of accidents.
18 and 22.
So it's mostly south, but not always south. We have accidents on our 85 as well.
Well, I think it's a small price to pay, not have fires start, fires don't knock in our back door.
Well, and I'm not putting this forth to poo-poo the, the idea of the annexation, but I'm putting forth to, to make a point that we are a substantial burden. On, I mean, we may not have to maintain the highway, but our police department's gonna have to deal with any happenstance.
Finally looking at it.
I will read it for you.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience or on the board have anything more on this subject? Okay, I'll now close the public hearing. Do I have to do these ordinances one at a time?
Yeah, within order.
Okay. Terrific. Okay, first, this is an ordinance, 746.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 746. I will then, that's the minute.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, ordinance 747. I'll read this off because it's urgent. An ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Platteville approving the annexation of certain unincorporated territory in Weld County on Highway 66, Annexation Number Two.
We approve ordinance 747, an ordinance for Board of Trustees of the Town of Platteville approving the annexation of certain unincorporated territories in Weld County, Highway 66, Annexation Two.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, ordinance 748. An ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Platteville approving the annexation of certain property in unincorporated Weld County, Highway 66, Annexation Number Three.
I'm going to approve ordinance 748. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Now, for the next set of ordinances, these affect property that idle, so I'm going to recuse myself. And Mayor Pro Tem Hope Morris is going to take care of these three.
I'm going to do the same. So you are going to open the public hearing for ordinance 749, 750, and 751?
Okay, I'm going to be opening the public meeting for ordinance 749, 750, and 751. And Mr. Rankin?
Similar as the last conversation, this simply involves 85 south, County Road, actually County Road 28, which is just one of the port of entry, south to County Road 24. It does not include the port of entry specifically itself, because it is not only CDO, but it's a state, state much, we'd be part of, or control of, short right, or the general back and forth, and we see it as a part of the state history, however, uh, it's not necessarily.
All right, this application is being brought forward by Kim and Steve Nelson, and the property is at 12823 County Road 24. They have, they initiated the annexation of their property on March 15th to three petitions and three maps, similar to the last proposal. The property to be annexed in total, including the public right of way, is almost 74 acres, and the Nelson property is about 10.3 acres in size. The petitions were filed with the town, and we took action through compliance resolution on April 4th, and established the public hearing for this evening, much like the last application. An impact report was completed and submitted to the county on May 12th, as required. The, the open house that we conducted on the 11th of April included this application, so we sent notice to all the adjacent property owners, so they were aware of the application. With that, we're recommending the three ordinances favorably few, and ordinances as you indicated, 749, 750, and 751.
If I may add, part of this annexation also involves an annexation agreement between the town and the, the property owners, which has been discussed with the Board of Trustees in the part two of the petition. Part of that agreement is, this proposal is a 10-year waiver on the county's bill levy for property tax, all sales tax produced from the business or contract, and supply would come immediately upon annexation, or whatever timeframe that is legal with the due date. The town would insist on dividing the property as requested by Mr. Steve Nelson, there's two lots now he'd like to have four, and that'd be administrative process that we're gonna work on with the town, which will come before the board and plain commission next one. So I just want to mention that for the upfront part of the annexation, we're gonna do some That's all I have.
And just to be, be clear, we're not getting to done this evening, but the annexation agreement, consultation, this zoning, will be agricultural holding, with developing urban overlay, which will allow the subdivision of the property at a later date.
Subdivision for commercial use, of course.
That will be brought forward, so that we can tell them.
So we're looking at, since the first meeting July is canceled, because it's July 4th, remaining on July 18th, that expects to present as support at that time for zoning and such other things. I just want the board to be fully aware of all the details.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience have anything to say? Okay, I'm gonna call the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion for ordinance 749. An ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Platteville approving the annexation of certain incorporated territories in Weld County, Highway 85, annexation going.
I'm going to approve ordinance 749.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have to apologize?
Aye.
All right, going down to ordinance 750, I would entertain a motion. An ordinance... An ordinance of the board of trustees of the town of Flatbilly approving the annexation of certain unincorporated territory in Weld County, Highway eighty-five, annexation two.
Need to approve ordinance seven fifty.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance seven fifty-one, an ordinance of the board of trustees of the town of, of the town of Flatbilly approving the annexation of certain unincorporated territory of Weld County, Highway eighty-five, annexation three. The chair approved ordinance seven fifty-one.
Second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carl, would you like to name the mayor of Mr. Nelson?
Fine.
This is finish up.
Let me go. Thank you, Jeff. Good to meet you. Carl, no problem.
Am I kicked off now?
Oh, we did such a wonderful job. We, we rolled them all down.
Okay. Gee, code enforcement technician services agreement. Mr. Anken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I had this on the agenda prior and I pulled it off to negotiate with Trudy Peterson, the Gilcrest administrator, she's spoken to her board as well. As you well know, we, we currently have a vacancy, the previous code officer moved to full-time line officer last year. We budget for thirty hour a week code enforcement person. I, I recommend calling this a technician, which is not uncommon, law want to have code enforcement technicians, for example, not officers, just civilians. In law, for example, say, I studied in a long time ago with, with micro chief. They have officer who work code, but civilians that work code, depending on the level. This is the, is the main position, my position, my recommendation. Seems like every time I hire a certified officer to do code, they can, they want to become officers again, so I don't know how to do that. Uh, what happened a couple months ago, I was talking about with Trudy Peterson and Chief Dwyer. And Gilcrest, seeing those currently contacted safe though, at fairly high rate, they only get a handful of hours each week. And it's not sufficient for their needs, they're actually deploying a chief to wire the officers into survey notices that can't be served by a code officer Wednesday from eight to one, so that's really what they do. In a small town, you know, cousin town, you get the height from them, basically give a violation, we all know that. So she suggested or recommended that we do joint venture, some of the law enforcement agreements, so I looked into it. Uh, they're proposing to, we liked their budget to, to, uh, pay for the hourly rate, which is, it's unlike law enforcement. Uh, what she and I negotiated, this is a non-sworn position. So we looked at a reasonable hourly rate of fifteen to nineteen dollars an hour. Got to work with law for full-time benefits, work comp, uh, everything that this, this employee would receive in the town, that they full-time thirty hour a week, not forty a year. Because I told her that's not what our budget supports. And they would provide their funds to match ours to make the fill this position. Uh, it would be fine for this year, the money's available on our end and on their end. The details would be on Monday through Friday, six hours a week.
Six hours a day?
Sorry, six hours a day, five days a week. My, my proposal Monday, Wednesday, Friday in Flatbilly, Tuesday, Thursday in Gilcrest. And that's a start, we can modify it a little bit. When we talked about it, there's a, a series, you know, pit, bulldog, home, Flatbilly, when they're in Gilcrest, of course, you know, this individual will need to respond to certain calls, but otherwise, as far as general warnings and working code, those would be the designated days. It'll be account employees solely, just like the officers are. And I told Trudy I proposed it to the board, uh, I'd like to get someone hired probably by the end of this month if possible. Uh, they'd use the code band that we've had for a number of years. Not a lot of them, it's involved training, there's a code enforcement course basically for code officers, and there's animal control course that we priced in to, they don't have that training. So I did the, pretty much hands-on internal training, uh, through the chief and myself and, and dealing with court issues with Devon, Deputy Clerk. And my recommendation is to, is for the board to consider this agreement, as Gilcrest is doing it tonight as well. With the clause, I made it very clear to Mr. Peterson, that come budget, we'll reevaluate how it's going during the next four months of the year, previous and I. And if it's going fine, then we can, if, she wanted a few more hours, so they put more money into it to make it more a full-time position, which we'd have to negotiate. Um, I said that'd be more on their end and our end separately or jointly. But, uh, also if it wasn't working, we could just continue the agreement, just maintain the person ourselves with our own budget. And that's kind of my stance on it, because it's, for example, when I, when I looked at Gilcrest and I talked to the chief about some of their code violations, ours are very different in, in some regards. For example, we have setting to our parking for recreational vehicles on the street. Any vehicle in the town of Gilcrest can park for setting to ours at one time, nothing to have to be moved. As a prime example. Um, I'm not going to get on the details, but that just brings up the point that our codes are different, so I want to see how this is going to work. As I jokingly lightly told Trudy, I want this officer to feel like Dr. Jeff and Mr. Heigl from town to town, because the codes are so different. So during this course, we're going to take a look at that with, with the chief, to see if we can maybe adopt some codes that are similar, see what works, but that's neither here nor at this point.
Are you comfortable that this amount that Gilcrest is paying is going to cover us for our equipment usage there, everything else?
We talked about that, I told Trudy that that is something I thought built into this agreement this time. I would like to try this for four months and then build that in into the agreement if we continue in twenty eighteen. Because we currently have ninety percent equipment. We have to give them a uniform, and if it won't be a uniform, it'd be a soft, you know, tacky pants and a gray shirt or whatever, that they would not look like an officer. Uh, when I talked to the chief, he talked about, uh, just for defensive purposes, you know, having O C spray, maybe a taser, which non-sworn officers can use upon trainings, that's right, Carl?
Yes.
So if there's a vicious animal or some incident that they may walk into, they can defend themselves immediately, and it does happen.
So this affects SIRS, or it consists of SIRS?
Well, prior years ago, we had a non-sworn code person part-time, and SIRS covered that position.
Okay.
As far as less lethal, I don't, it's kind of in SIRS, I don't have that detail.
Okay. Now, what, when, now the officer or the code enforcement officer, they will have a radio on police band?
Yeah.
So they'll constant contact with PD, but they will not have a computer, or will they?
Not this time.
Okay. Because there's not an M B T in the band now, correct? Is there one?
Not this time.
That's something we have to look at, and if we, if we continue with Gilcrest, we have to build that cost in the budget, because it would be nice that they could run, uh, I, I don't know about TCI, I said it for Carl, but as a non-sworn position, if they can run tags to verify part, parking, like so forth. I'd recommend that in time, but right now, I don't know if that's really necessary. Because I, you know, we, we had people who'd be cut without the M B T before, it just takes longer, so.
And what does, I don't remember what one of those costs, can you tell me what one of those costs?
One of those is an, an M B T, roughly six thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you would.
Well, just so you know, and, and, and Carl had talked about this, during the next year of bringing up the budget, our M B Ts are going to be upgraded, along with our radios to let them run?
The M B Ts are okay, um, our handheld radios and one of the units, all that to be replaced by the end of two thousand and nineteen.
And that's a mandate, so if we have to upgrade another M B T, we might go and pick up, lack of a better term, a used one at a discount that they could use to run, run tags and stuff like that. So there's different makes and models, so.
Okay, so we're not held to one approved machine?
It just has to be connected with dispatch and all the networking and software, so, some go motorola, some go pass on, just events.
Okay.
But that's a good question, I haven't built any of those costs, because I want to hear the, why can't there, this next four months is complicated?
So you'll have to, they'll have to have two separate code books in the band to refer to it, I assume, right?
What I recommend to Trudy to make it easy, because what they told us now is, you know, they give them code book and say, you know, we want to support, well, we can't do that. Well, we've done the past, I've done with Officer Bonner, on that, these are the top ten code issues that this town deals with, based on complaints, dogs, junk vehicles, weed, so forth. And then we make it basically a cheat sheet or spreadsheet that outlines those, so you're not looking through the whole big force code, but a few heavy spreadsheet with the most pressing issues, hands, defenses, and so forth, you know?
Oh, okay.
So that streamlines it, makes it a lot much easier, and I told Ms. Peterson that she needed to do the same thing, she said she's covered on that.
Yeah, because it's gonna, you know, there's gonna be a degree of difficulty initially.
Yeah, it's like giving, you know, cop the law book, because they go enforce a lot, it doesn't work that way.
First you have to teach them to read, right?
Wow. All in good fun. But that's my recommendation, any questions from the board this time? And Gilcrest is considering it, as, as well, to run the treaty, so they would be, uh, in favor of, if they don't, it'll negate it, I'll just hire someone part-time for herself. This is their, their request, not mine.
And they're understanding that if the continuing fund be responsible, will they approve it?
More than build that anytime budget, and she understands that, yeah. To get it started, since we're almost mid-summer to get it started, I'd like to just get some employee trained fairly quickly, it's not all trained law, and get them out there enforcing. Because today I had Carl, the chief chasing RV campers and stuff in town, I don't want to do that. He does a good job of it.
Thank you.
Kind of a, kind of a high position to be chasing campers around. I'm going to tell first, so I did.
Um, when that officer is over in Gilcrest, would they be under the supervision of Carl?
They're armed and armed.
Okay, okay.
And that's one thing we talked about, is Carl will be the liaison with Trudy, even though she's the administrator, she doesn't have anyone else.
Okay.
And obviously, Trudy would have to work with the code officer about what code to enforce, but they would be armed and armed.
Okay, okay, so the chief has control over that officer?
It would be, when you, when you first talked about it, I thought it was going to be more of an administrative position and be controlled by you and the officer.
Yeah, on the streets, when that code person needs backup, they need a guy, this Carl, Carl offers will be the, the local, Trudy and I, you're right, Trudy and I will oversee the general code enforcement part of it.
And that, and I probably wasn't being clear enough, that's what, my concern was, is that they would be back, they would have Carl as backup when they're in Gilcrest.
Yeah, and that's, I'm sorry, that's how I took it, I mean, for immediate supervision, that would be the case, because that's how Carl now handles I S I, like I did today, I sent Officer Bonner lists, from what I hear, because everything comes to me in the front office as soon as possible. So it'll be overseen administratively by myself, but day in, day out supervision, I'd have to achieve from the officers to assist. And I would have the person work out at front office instead of the PD.
Okay.
Because that's where they'll be most, I mean, PD school, we ran out of it a long time ago.
Yes, yes. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? I will entertain a motion on this.
Need to approve the creation of code enforcement technician position, authorizing mayor to execute a cooperative hiring agreement between the town of Flatbilly and the town of Gilcrest.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this, roll call please.
Larry Clark?
Aye.
Adrian Sandoval?
Aye.
Kim Nelson?
Aye.
Michael Cowper?
Aye.
Hope Morris?
Yes.
Troy Blum?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. We'll try the code enforcement officer again. Okay, next, State Highway sixty-six improvements discussion. Mr. Anken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said previously during the annexation conversation, that about four months ago, a group was formed called State Highway sixty-six Coalition. And, uh, actually, a lot has gone on in a short amount of time. I asked the mayor and asked her, Commissioner Smith is here tonight, so Tim, I was supposed to go to the transportation region meeting in Fort Lupton, which consisted of all the communities plus the coalitions involved. And, uh, interesting being to say the least, we'll see it on all, all their engineers and the technicians. But as far as sixty-six is concerned, what the mayor and I have been involved in is Dr. Cogge's complaint, a PEL study, a preliminary engineering leakage study, U S eighty-five has just finished one, it's not, finally, it is pretty much done, pretty close. That study stops at camera nineteen because of the region. And at the previous meeting, the mayor and I had requested, the mayor mostly had requested that the upper front range consider funding a portion back to Dr. Cogge to do the study all the way to eighty-five, to not leave that gap, which is basically three miles. This came to me at a previous upper front range meeting last year, and, and director for CDOT region board, John Gilson. And he proposed not to provide funding, because only camera twenty-one, there's only intersection, literally that's outside of flood plain, I mean, there's a, there's some private drives, but if you go about a hundred or so yards past twenty-one to the east, you start getting into the flood plain, which is on the map. So, a piece of bill, or a, a PEL study is to look at traffic linkage and improvement for highways, right of ways, intersections, and bridges, and so forth. He didn't fill up, at that time, two hundred thousand was the cost to be included in the study. So, long story short, um, the State Highway sixty-six coalition drafted a, a letter, all the communities from lines to Flatbilly, both counties signed it, to make the request upper front range. Upon last week's discussion with Barb Kirkmire, the commissioner, his three commissioners upper front range, which is Morgan County, Weld, and, and Lerner County. After a good discussion, the point, and I was asked, the point was, what are you looking to achieve from this? Do you want to study or do you want improvements? Of course, I want improvements, I like to see County Route twenty-one improve like nineteen, seventeen, and thirteen are. I've talked to people out in Miller Farms, they, they like to see a signal there at nineteen, I still see it happening. So if we can do turning lanes and acceleration lanes and improvements, widen the twenty-one, which is what the police department work in accidents. Because if you come over that rise from the west coming east in the Flatbilly, you're turning either very hard on twenty-one, if people behind you aren't paying attention, they're going to run off the road. Because I've seen it too many times, especially in rush hour. So, what I'm getting at, as far as that's concerned, where you can interject any time, is, I would rather work with Karen Snyder and get that study and that risk assessment, camera twenty-one. At the next meeting, which is three months from now, make a proposal to the upper front range to do funding to construct improvements at camera twenty-one intersection, at sixty-six, which is step one, and then go back with additional funding requests to do the improvements in the next few years. So that's kind of my summary, Mayor, I'm going to defer to you for additional comment on that.
The, the reason why they didn't want to do the continued appell from twenty-one into Flatbilly is, is, they just, like Troy said, they didn't feel it was necessary. But the problem is, and that's what I articulated at the sixty-six coalition meeting, is the problem is, if you, you could build a four-lane highway, but when you get to Flatbilly, the, all the bottlenecks, all the constriction still exists, no matter what you do, it's always going to be that problem. And the sixty-six coalition agreed, and the eighty-five coalition, the times that I brought it up there, agreed. But the point the commissioner had was, you know, two hundred thousand dollars could be better spent actually doing something, and, and I agree with that, I, you know, I didn't have a problem with that. But the only problem that I see is, if they don't plan it, will it ever happen? And, and that, that I see as a real problem. And besides that, in addition to that, Kirkmy, uh, Barb Kirkmire asked me after the meeting, she said, well, what would you do if you had your brothers, you know, if you could do everything in a best-case scenario? And I said, I thought the, the wisest thing to do for the future would be to take sixty-six and curve it south along the river and connect it with twenty-eight, because twenty-eight is eventually going to be an overpass. And we can't put an overpass in Flatbilly, not really, I mean, not without really destroying the, the nature of the entire town, and connect it to twenty-eight, and that would get it out of Flatbilly, and it would get it to where the tra- and connect it to twenty-eight, and that would get it out of Platteville, and it would get it to where the traffic could flow. But, you know, we're talking about such an incredible amount of money that, you know, it really isn't that feasible at this point in time, unless the federal government freed up money, which the federal government has said they plan on doing for infrastructure. So putting turn lanes in Platteville is the logical thing to do, and Troy's concerned with twenty-one, and, and I agree with that. So that's probably the place to start. But it's all about the dollars.
The, the second part, this is really trying to, just from the board, get you, pull you up to scale what's going on with sixty-six. The second aspect I wanted to bring up is, going back to the eighty-five PEL. I kind of ran a rave with Mr. Olson and the group of FHU that they did not include sixty, any part of sixty-six really. I mean, they really just stopped the right-of-way, which initially, three years ago, when the PEL was first discussed, Platteville made a donation to the PEL group, and all the communities on eighty-five did. They were going to study at least one mile east and west of eighty-five to look at intersection and roadway improvements. Somehow, that got taken off, it's really just eighty-five. So a year and a half, it was almost two years ago, actually, in this room, I met with Mr. Olson and, and CDOT to talk about that stretch, mainly from division, by the school, the gas stations to eighty-five, you know, that, that's a two-block stretch. We had the old gas station going off time, we had police unit at the time being crossing guard, with the crossing guard, because they weren't stopping for her anymore. And you can't go to work, I trust me, ladies at the banks, I heard about almost every week. They had to go so early, or go out to County of twenty-eight, come back to back, where you go to work. I mean, it was, it's pretty bad. So at that time, FHU proposed that they design road improvements for that, two-block stretch. I have the map in my office, and they met with us about six months later. There's enough right-of-way, they believe, that you can do turning lanes at all four sides of Main and sixty-six. There would be a raised median from Main to eighty-five, and then right in, right out to Goaway. And this is all the same, because there would be sidewalks on both sides of sixty-six with pedestrian cars. And it would be a full permanent intersection light, not temporary like we have now. At that meeting, Mr. Olson decided that that was not the way to go at the time. And I'm not trying to be negative here, I'm just repeating facts, because I've had this other conversation with him through public meetings. That FHU was redirected into a piece of, basically a modified PEL study. So FHU did that this last year, they did exceptional job, I have copies of it in my office, and sent you this.
And that's the second or third one they've done in that area?
Well, they, they've never done a full, they, they did, you're right, they did a pedestrian study, which showed the light was warranted. So they agreed to put it to temporary light, which is, if you have lights on a wire, on a post, it's temporary. It could last forever, but it's called temporary light. But from that, they, FHU actually, has been wonderful work with base did. When they study that during the boom three, three years ago, they consider that the worst two blocks of highway in the state of Colorado for traffic congestion. So CDOT agreed to put money in, a couple hundred thousand, to do the feasibility study, and they did it for the entire town, which is great, because that identifies some of the random structural problems we're gonna talk about in this call, for sidewalks, signage improvements, does that's why good rich and divisions out before we stop, that was part of the recommendation. But getting back to sixty-six, I am going to make a recommendation at the next upper front range meeting for the fund, the construction of those proposals, along with County of twenty-one. Part of that meeting with the mayor is, I told Barb Kirkmire, that would be my priority one, if I, if it was me, twenty-one would be priority two. So it was all thanks for both. And if they can do the construction documents, which is, everything less than two hundred thousand for some reason, I have no idea why. But if we get funding for that, which Mr. Kirkmire was seen to be in favor of, then...
It's hard to say, I mean, she was wobbly.
And you have to consider, you have three counties and twenty-sub communities that are making these votes on what it represents. So we have to be attentive on what Wellington wants or for Morgan, as we get this support in our projects, that's just the way it works. Because we're all in the same region. And once the construction documents are completed and approved, I have my engineers involved, those review obviously with David Grant, then I have to come up with an all-part estimate of three to five million dollars to make the improvements, which I'm pretty sure CDOT won't have the funds to do that part. But at least it's getting there. So at least they'll be talking about it, or thinking about it.
The, it's interesting, the eighty-five coalition study is being done by the company FHU. Ironically, the Highway sixty-six study is being done by FHU. It's, and it seems interesting to the commissioners as well as us, two hundred thousand dollars for two miles? An extra two hundred thousand dollars to do a study on two miles? They questioned that some, and, and, and I think they were right in questioning that some. That was probably one of the biggest reasons for turning it down, but this stuff is political stuff.
If there's two hundred thousand, I'd rather have that go for construction of the sixty-sixty in town at this time, than part of the study for an intersection. It'd be for the three miles of sixty-six, but it'd be for the intersection. Uh, one last thing on sixty-sixty, but they mentioned at the meeting is, regardless of a study or not, the sixty-six coalition and the, and FHU doing the PEL on sixty-six, would consider, put the intersection in their, basically their capital improvement plan, kind of like eighty-five, we have the access control plan. And CDOT indicated they do want to consider that, and I think we can get that on the plan. Because it'd be on our side, but at least it would be on a plan to propose, whatever was getting going, so.
I hope, I, I had hoped at the last meeting, that, that FHU would just say, ah, we'll just go ahead and toss that down. I mean, look at the millions and millions and millions of dollars that they have, that we have spent, given to FHU for all these studies. Where is FHU?
Um, Delphine, Goaway, and...
FHU.
We thought it would just kind of toss a little bit. The three names are basically partners that, you know, the firm is managing, they're not here for this.
Well, should I have any discussion and any of the sixty-six coalition regarding Aurora Organic Dairy and the truckers coming on?
No, but that is, will be part of the PEL, just like on eighty-five, we talked about all the intersections and the whole corridor.
Can't tell you how many times I've been to the Aurora.
Aurora Dairy Trucks are, is pretty dangerous on top of that hill.
Well, and the, the biggest concern that was our, that we articulated, and for some reason, I don't know if they'd even given it much thought, there was thirty-five hundred houses platted for Firestone, and another fifteen hundred that will be platted. Five thousand houses, and how many of those people are gonna drive on sixty-six, either going west or east?
Well, if they don't, they'll be on twenty-nine, but it's one of the two.
Well, it's best to plan for the worst-case scenario, yeah.
And the lumber, I can't remember the trustee's name for Firestone, but he attended that meeting.
George.
But he did indicate as part of that subject in Platte, it's, it's a very large one, obviously, it's got many homes, that they're looking at putting in a new King Supers on sixty-six or near sixty-six, out by Del Camino to serve that area, which I think we'd all be watching from Platteville, is that one.
By Del Camino or on?
Oh, sorry, not Del Camino, me, 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 not, not Del Camino, sorry. Even intersection, that's, that makes sense.
I'm guessing, if it, if I had to make a guess, I would say it would probably need, probably be not that far from the Richie Brothers Auction House. It would be, it would be a perfect place for it, wouldn't it? And there's plenty of land, so.
There is a lot of land, just like I said.
George did say something about that, but I don't remember what he said about a spot.
Maybe off of thirteen, because of...
I think...
Well, that could be too, be just as...
Yeah. Right down from the other one, I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
Pretty much, the northern south.
The hope is the how to the how for it. I'd rather not have to drive the way to Firestone.
Yeah, me too.
Long while we've got three of them in there.
Because they...
Yeah, but they have a lot more.
They, and my wife used to work for Crowder, which is King Supers, and she knows the, her friend of them, the general manager for the one Firestone, and they can't. It's, it's the highest producing revenue, King Supers in all of Colorado right now, they can't keep up.
I go out there and watch your game.
Because I'm always there.
You couldn't work in Lafayette, which is...
I'm coming after you.
I know, they're always talking about it. I think those are the main updates we heard the mayor and I talk about, we just make sure the board's fully aware, been filled in since the meetings, especially on sixty-six, have occurred last four months. And those Thursday nights, there's a fire out, mayor, for the eighty-five coalition meeting, I attended, you do?
I do, I do, everybody's, everybody's welcome to attendees. Um, I have been, when I was a trustee, I attended them, and as mayor, I do too. It's important that Platteville, that Platteville be recognized and have our name out there.
Uh, when is the next sixty-six one, do you think it's on?
It's the last Friday morning of each month.
June thirty, yeah.
Well, there's...
Is that right?
It's the fourth Friday of each month.
Oh, the fourth Friday, I'm sorry.
Fourth Friday.
And this month, it did get moved to the fifth Friday, because of the pandemic, and most people would be gone.
That's right.
But it's a set meeting, typically the fourth Friday morning, at seven-thirty, normally at Del Camino, or they're basically local county offices.
Okay.
And then eighty-five is the second Thursday of the month. And it jumps around Fort Luton here, the south.
Where are they meeting this Thursday?
The south.
You keep it on our notice, you mean, I'm sure you know.
That's the only reason I know, is my coordinator.
Yeah.
Who also doubles as town clerk.
That's all I have, I haven't had anything else for the board?
No, no, I, I think that, I, I think it's important that the board be kept aware of what's going on, because we just don't know when something is going to occur, just, believe me, nothing happens very fast, unless it's bad news, but it's good to keep everybody informed. Next is SRO IgA renewal. Mr. Manniger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's say a bit something to the agenda, because it's essentially the pinnacle, or the same IgA as its previous school year. Uh, but decided to pull it off, to sit on the board some opportunity for discussion, and a few things to add, but then I want to actually have Carl talk at the end of this about hiring the most recent SRO board of this contract, which he just did recently. Uh, Don Rankle, the school superintendent, sent this to me a few weeks ago. It's, uh, he indicated this school board has, he told me last month, agreed to fund it for another school year. Uh, and we knew upfront that year-by-year funding issue or decision by the school district because of their revenues. Uh, the forecast for next year, property tax revenues forecast to be higher. If you got your tax evaluation, you probably quite know why. But, uh, in general, nothing's changed in the basic agreement. One thing that I indicated to Mr. Rankle, and I'm gonna write him back tomorrow, contingent on the improvements agreement for this next school year, is that there's not an inflation cost built into the annual payments, the same thing as last year, let's look at the budget. And right now, we budget approximately eight hundred and eighteen thousand in totality for officers' salaries, benefits, training, equipment, uniforms, the whole, the whole capacity to keep, get those to officers' training and serving the school. The school district pays a hundred and sixty-two, rather.
Did you say a hundred and eighteen thousand?
A hundred and...
You did, but that was wrong.
Okay.
Well, I'm just being honest with you. A hundred and eighteen thousand.
That's a lot of money. I don't remember that.
My heart just started beating.
All the benefits that we really, actually, we worked with local county on, on how they funded the program. And I talked to their commander initially a year or two ago, and he, he basically put together their, their formula, how they came up with it. So we use the same formula. So what we are doing, or my proposal, local county did not increase every year. It was every three to five years, based upon inflation and increases. What I proposed to the board is, there's enough on this current contract for next year, about a forty thousand dollar gap, but they know that's to replace cars or anything that, along those major capital project side of things. Uh, three to four thousand dollars off to probably to outfit, to hire new officer, maybe a little higher depending on the officer's skill set and who may come here, but not looking to be too significant. But I just want to make additional comment to, to you, the board, and provide opportunity for you to ask your questions on the SRO program.
So this program, is it costing the town Platteville money, or?
It's all funded by the school district.
So based on last year's contract, we're, it's a wash then, with what we're spending in the training and equipment, and what we're receiving from the present...
The, the school district is providing more than needed.
I was, I was gonna say, it's more than a wash, because we get an officer for an additional two months during the summer. And, and more than that, but that's a huge benefit, so we can let other officers go on vacation, or training, or so on and so forth.
The, just to back up here exactly, right, the side that we budget as part of that one eighteen, about eighty-eighteen, is for twelve months salary. We provide this ten months to the year with the school district, really only June and July did not work for the school district. But what we went off is what the county was charging, what it called the county rate, and the school district agreed to abide by that, because we came up with the same formula as the county did, based upon our patrol operations and our funding and our pay. So that rate didn't change, so they, they're fully aware that this is a contract. Unlike the SRO, the code officer that you just talked about, that's the pay-as-you-go and the actual cost, this is not. And it isn't any school district, to my knowledge, that I talked to. So, but yeah, no money from, from the town general fund pays for this, this facility reimbursed by the school district.
But in June and July, you need to be training the SRO.
And that really, I, I don't want to charge the school district for that, that's our guy. Because they're also being trained as patrol officers too.
Yeah.
Carl, you want to talk a minute about your new hire?
Sure. Um, so last, last week, we had the handwritten exam, we had three interviews, and there was one out of there. We had probably eight or nine, I think, asked, but we moved the top three on, and one of them we really like, and he actually had his lie detector exam this morning, and he's gonna have a psychological exam this week. So hopefully, we'll have him on. He's a little bit older, which is good, that's what we're kind of hoping for, he's not here just short-term, he's gonna hang out a while.
He's more experienced.
He's more experienced, very seasoned.
He's not here.
Oh, let's delete the last forty-six.
More experience.
He lives in Weld County, he has sixteen years on with another agency, he was SRO with a year in two thousand and nine, with the entire state of Colorado, and he wants to work here. So, yeah, so we snagged him up, we got like, you never know what you're gonna get, so. He has a psychological exam, his written exam, a medical.
You're fine, this is basic testing, probably.
We're super excited, so we'll see how it goes.
And then, when Chief and I talked, having someone with experience, I think will help, because it's going in for a second year of the SRO, is a very, very good young man, but, you know, this is probably his first opportunity, so it'll kind of help him enter, and that's what we do. I'm, I'm trying SRO from back in the nineties, working in schools, one of my main assignments, and I sent Carl to SRO School back many years ago, I hired him. So that week, two weeks, it's basically a week academy. Well, I'm in those two weeks, because we did a week of SWAT and active shooter, but I don't think we do that anymore. It helps with juvenile law, and, and there's, there's a whole different legal world inside school hallways that those officers need to expand. So, and plus, you know, protecting kids as well. One thing that Carl and I also talked about, since we're on topic, is this last year, being new, we really provide the basic services of high profile, being a, you know, deterrent, working with the kids, dealing with issues. This one is next to be more proactive as part of providing some educational courses, danger, you know, safety, safety for the kids, stranger danger programs.
But not DARE?
That's, we had an SRO that was DARE certified, as I am, but that's something I've talked about. Because there's a DARE program, which is drug abuse resistance education, I taught that for years. Because there's a DARE program, which is drug abuse resistance education. I taught that for years. And there's also a great program, game resistance education and training. I taught that for a full year, year, years ago. So it depends on what the school wants. Because the school has to provide a classroom opportunity for the SRO to teach that course to. Something along the line of things that the school would like to have, and they've already asked that, so. Carl, give me a...
Anybody have any comments or questions? I would entertain a motion on this.
Can I make a motion to approve the new hire in the SRO?
No, no, I agree.
And the IgA? Second, oh, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. This is money, so I guess I need a roll call, please.
Adrian Sandoval.
Hi.
Kim Nelson.
Hi.
Michael Kellper.
Hi.
Hope Morris.
Yes.
Troy Blom.
Hi.
Larry Clark.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. Next, we have reports. We didn't attack the police chief near enough, so we'll give it, we'll give it another shot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that, um, the officer who was out hurt is returning Friday, so we have everybody back on board, which is really good. Um, and it'll be, when everyone gets out of FTO, hopefully by the end of the summer, it'll be even better. Then everyone will be, um, peeled up and out and about.
Are all your field training officers already trained and ready to go?
Uh, we...
No.
We have one that's in FTO school this, this week, actually, and then the next one, I think, is in August, and then the other one will be attending that. With that said, we still utilize them in an FTO capacity, um, without the certification. It depends on the, uh, on, on the officer. You wouldn't want to put a new officer with somebody that hasn't been through an FTO school. But we can still utilize senior officers as FTOs and utilize them for their expertise, more of a mentor, right along kind of capacity and not bragging evaluations and, um, and whatnot. But they should all be hopefully FTO certified by the end of the summer.
So that's up to the, that's up to the discretion of the chief.
Yes, and you, I don't, I know some agencies, they don't have any, that are certified in Santa Clara, but I do not see why you would not want to certify it. It's weight liability and, um, so it is up to the discretion, but everyone's gonna be FTO certified, for sure.
Thank you.
To address the, uh, the individual that spoke just at the beginning of the meeting, talk about Circle Boulevard. And I, I see we're doing a lot, and I see it out there in the community, the traffic enforcement, um, your officers are doing a great job doing that. Are we identifying that or certain type of, like, the heavy traffic areas of time of watches Circle Boulevard, um, just to try to keep that traffic down? Or is it, do we know what time of day that a lot of speeders come through, or...
Yeah, I, I think it's hit and miss a little bit. Um, whenever we had that, um, what's the name of that with the, it was over there set up?
It was a speed trailer.
So whenever that speed trailer was set up, it recorded every time a car went. So, and this is actually it, for the entire week. It says the amount of, um, the wind it was, if they were over the speed limit, by how much. So this kind of outlines everything. So we kinda got an idea just from that, that, um, rush hour and after school are heavy times. And so we are over there more in those hours whenever we're able to.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we never know exactly when they'll be running up and down and speeding, but it's kinda hit and miss and, um, it's just the way it works. Sometimes we run over there and sit there and no one's speeding.
Could, could we take, uh, is there part of the car over there?
We have, we have, and, and then they start to see that there's nobody in there.
And then move on, move the next lane.
Yeah, and then they'll be putting in their way.
Exactly.
So, you get a toll road dummy?
Um, can we get them to take speed limits, or is that...
The what?
...a criteria? We can't just put up this speed limit?
We need to prepare a study to reduce the speed limit, and certainly an option, but you have to have an actual...
Not like we just decide, because then they go fifteen miles, okay?
Exactly.
And if, if I may, going back to, uh, the, the polycom, Main Street is, is in Vasquez, always six, sixty-five, or C. I. Home. They just completed a study last year, and that's how they set the speed zone. And I argued thirty was too high, but they set it at thirty downtown. So I did propose that we should show, slow that down to twenty-five, if not twenty. But I kinda had the same mentality, just sit thirty, a lot of people go fifty-five, that's way too fast. But, uh, when I spoke to Larry Seadot, you know, that was their study, that's what they had to go by, their criteria.
Oh, what is our math study? Um, the...
Basically, it's a map. They give us a map. I sent it down. That's what it is. And, and they have...
So how did that sustain five stations on it somewhere?
They, they have a, basically, what I call design book that they go by. So like, it's businesses versus residential, they're like a school zones, distance from school zones. Uh, but I don't get the whole study. They gave me a map with proposed signage and speed regulations. And, uh, I did contest it to some degree, especially the speed, but I...
Yeah, the only way to really test these through our own studies is to be a traffic engineer, and then submit that, and see what that says, and then...
But I would imagine since those properties here are up in stock, does that would have something to do with the speed limit on that road?
Well, just, uh, I'm kinda walking here to work with you, but years ago, twenty-five, uh, Grand Circle was twenty-five. And then I moved up to thirty by previous board about eight, ten years ago, after I came here. Part of the issue was Circle, like or not Circle and Grand are partly truck route, and it's caused by the artillery, artillery, arterial road in Flappville. That's why the case was thirty miles an hour. Because Grand is not the best, but there were no, the nade sidewalks on Grand at that time. It was believed, if not studied, that people did not normally walk up and down Grand, which they do, we know that. But not so much on Circle, the sidewalk was offset from, from the road. So all those factors played a play there, so we'd have to redo that. And, uh, you know, and I talked to Ken before, we, we can just focus on, around it actually pays some money and absolutely do a study to justify it.
We prefer a big storm drain span like we have on Main Street, right?
I, uh, I...
I drive, I drive thirty, dude.
You know, it's a little bumps, because we, we had this conversation a month ago.
Right, yeah.
Yes, we did. Like, do you wanna, what I do want to do is, uh, probably be quiet in that Carl talks, this is important, and I'll finish this conversation during the line. Okay?
Um, the only other thing is our new unit will be ready by the end of the week. I'm gonna be on the line, ready to go.
Did you take, you took the stuff out of the exploder?
Yeah, we, we use what we, what they were able to out of there, the M U stand and the radio and the, the huts that would save the floor line. And the light bar will be removed off of that, and then see what, we're gonna deal with that after the fact, be able to explore.
I don't see, I don't see the PDs using light bars anymore. Are they all going to? The lights in the windows and in the grill and stuff, is that...
Um, no, I mean, it's nice to have one or two, I think, but, um, most agencies have light bars on the top.
Okay. I just, I just, I'll just enter the CSB down there, like, you can't see them, but they're moving yourself.
I, I do want to make a remark. Um, I have seen the police stopped and out of their vehicles and talking with citizens, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. We've been working on that a little bit, so, um, you should see more of that this summer. Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Um, just like the gentleman earlier today, um, was saying people speed on Circle, they also do it on Main Street. Now, I don't know if, you had an officer these last couple of days, because I didn't hear acceleration. But these accelerate after the school, um, and go from, practically from Pierce where I'm at. I don't know how far down. I can't tell you what car it is because it goes so fast. But they have the last couple of, and I don't know, they go so far, you can't see them. I mean, they really go down that road, but I didn't, I didn't hear them the last couple of days.
And the milk delivery guy at thirty-nine. And I give away, I'm one of the parents too.
Those things are capable of a lot of speed.
And the white dog that goes down to the...
And also on Main Street, didn't we have a thirty mile an hour zone sign down there before?
They've always been.
Are they, they're not there?
Where on Main Street?
From after, um, the school goes. I thought there was a thirty mile an hour.
I, there should be. Once all the signs walk off.
Probably some very big, from that, the kids, right?
Uh, all the, David will, will be back tomorrow. He's on a brief vacation today, and I'll have him. That's what he typically does once a year, especially sometimes when they do the finding of authority. It's not just speed regulation, but he's looking at current grants, we can stop signs, making recommendations of replacing signs that are getting worn out or modified. And then also, we're already approved to replace all the street signs throughout the entire community. So David's actually done a bit more minutes to replace the costs, and that'll be happening here recently. For most of the black and white old school, we, we appreciate it.
Can we get the sign, children at place behind that tree out?
I will look into that. Actually, the chief will look into that tomorrow.
He actually mentioned that earlier this morning. I went over there, looked at the slight angle, and kind of exaggerated a little, but maybe...
Bend it back.
Need a sniffer branch, maybe?
Well, the signs actually have a small angle, but, but nothing extreme. You can still read it, very visible.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still, it's still, I'm not used to looking at you in the head saying, "Chief." It's so good, it's gonna take a whole lot of work, kid.
Making my hair white?
There you go.
I don't come with Tom.
Yeah, I'm sure the job will help that.
Okay, next, we have our esteemed attorney report.
Your esteemed attorney did not submit a written report again, and I apologize for that. Um, I was busy with the anticipation materials that you moved earlier this evening. The other thing is legislature, you know, as I mentioned last time, put forth some bills that we're gonna need to do some work on. Um, some to do with cell towers, and I will be preparing a draft ordinance, amendment, code amendment to that. Um, there's a milk and record bill that you'll be getting them on. Um, there's a marijuana plant count bill, we're preparing them on. That passed, right? Yeah. So some of them, the last day to sign is Thursday, so we're waiting on it to make sure that the governor signs them. There's, there's no indication that the governor will not sign some of them, but some of them have yet to sign yet, so. We're just waiting on, once, once Thursday happens, then we'll be completely done with the legislature. And then we'll start implementing what the legislature did. So that's what I've been working on.
If the government, if the governor does not sign those bills, is it like on the Fed, where it just, it, after a period of time, it becomes automatically enacted?
Yeah. No, no, it dies.
Oh, it dies?
It dies.
So he does have veto power?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Call it veto power.
Yeah, so, but there's no indication that, it's just a matter of timing. So none of these bills, it's not going to be like, there was a bill later, I forget which one it was, but he didn't sign and issued a letter saying why he wasn't signing it, and it never went into effect. That's not the case here. It's just a matter of him getting through the bills to sign. We expect them all to sign, and then we're preparing memos on all of them for all of our clients, splitting the bill, and so that, you know, and then there will be some code amendments that are required, so we'll start to present those to you, mostly to chapter sixteen, um, again, even though we just did chapter... Sorry, it's always the way it goes. But they're, they'll be relatively minor, so, you know, it's not an overhaul, like, like you just did. It's just, you know, we have to fix some of the stuff already. And with the marijuana plant count, there won't be a code amendment. It's just really to clarify what the plant count actually is. Because it's been, as you know, up in the air. Nobody really knows what's the maximum plant count.
And it's going to twelve, and the maximum amount of adult plants is six?
Yeah.
I, I just...
I've been with... I mean, in the, in the... But before it was, you know, somewhere sixty-four, somewhere ninety-six. It was completely archer, and so there was really no plant count maximum for us. Will help with that.
Now, with that in mind, is it, if, I'm assuming that by this, they're meaning that they, those things can be in open, open site? They can be in plain sight?
Well, these are, this is a private grow, so...
Does it have to be indoors?
Not necessarily, well, not necessarily indoors. It's a private grow, it has to be a private property.
So it can be in the backyard, would they?
It could, they could be in the backyard if they're screened from view.
Okay.
Screened from view, oh, okay.
Oh.
So I was just thinking, if, if the PD drives by and sees six plants, they're okay, but that's not the case at all. They have to be, but in some kind of a shielded area by law?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say...
Not necessarily, but...
Um, if there's youngsters in the house, it has to be in and enclosed. There's a whole lot of loopholes and a whole lot of, and they're still working on that.
Yeah.
We don't even have all the entry, but there's a whole lot of...
There are a lot of details. Yeah, I agree. So it depends on the children, it depends on where, it depends on what they're doing with it.
And that all spelled out in this bill?
No. Unfortunately, no. I wonder, this is just the start. This is just the plant count. So this is the start.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions?
And you will be getting, just to follow up on the anticipation, I think the town manager mentioned this earlier. The next thing will be to zone these properties, so that will be done, I think, in July.
July two.
July, July eighteenth, to go ahead and zone these properties. Um, there's a requirement in the statute that, uh, properties that are being annexed be done within ninety days. That's this is the town manager. There's no zoning police, nobody's out there making sure, but, you know, we should comply with that statute. So it'll be done within ninety days. That's the most important.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last and not least, we have lovely and talented town manager.
I give half my porks I walk over to the cheese. So that's, that's what I have, all just Carl. Uh, just to add one more thing, what Ken was saying on marijuana, what I received from the board, and others, horse complaints the most. They may be screened from view, not screened from odor, and I have a lot of complaints throughout, especially this summer. Where people can't borrow a key with their kids. They go with the kids playing in the backyard, because the smell comes across the fence. Happens in my backyard every Friday night. I'm sorry, it just does. I don't let my kid outside. It is what it is.
Troy? Would that occur? Do we, or should we, can we have ordinances, nuisance ordinances pertaining to that? Can we do that, counselor?
We can certainly try, but the problem is, is because of the constitutional amendment, everyone has a right to consume marijuana on their own property. That's how it was, I think, as long as your neighbors couldn't smell it. No, I mean, like I said, we could try, but we'd be the first. I wouldn't, I put it this way, I wouldn't recommend it. There is an absolute non-constitutional right to consume marijuana on your own property. We can try to say, the odor is bothering the neighbors, therefore you can't smoke it, you can only ingest it. Or therefore you can only smoke inside your house, not outside your house, but I think it would be quite, it would be quite difficult to enforce, and I wouldn't recommend it. And I mean, if it becomes a severe problem, we can look into it, but in most cases, we're probably not gonna win that one, I think.
Even the odor from cultivating?
Well, the odor from cultivating is different. Sorry, the odor from cultivating, we may be able to adjust by sort of some building code, um, amendments and things like that. Because we don't, you don't necessarily go after the odor, you can go after the odor, but you also can go after the, the power usage, the, um, building code violations. Because most of the time, if you're cultivating enough that it smells, that means there's typically building code violations on the property. Because you're using probably extension cords to get, um, power to it, you're overheating with light. There's usually fire and building code issues that are easier to enforce against than the actual odor. So that's just a suggestion.
That it's good, it's good education.
But those are, that's, no more, but I, I, regarding this industry, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were, the smoking, if somebody's in the backyard smoking, we're not gonna be able to go after that. If there's cultivation in the house, first of all, we can now check and make sure that there's the right required, required number of plants and no more. And then we can also, you know, if we feel like there may be building code violations, that's a matter to go.
Okay.
Typically, there are. I will tell you that if you're cultivating enough that it smells, there's often building code violation.
That, that's, that's, that's really, I think, valuable to know. Thank you. Now that we messed up.
Troy, sorry. Not absolutely. Uh, is up there on the, the, the memorial, since I wrote this report, I spoke to Tim Nelson today. today, he's gonna go up and look at the excavation work that was done by Mr. Jamison, probably need to tweak a little bit as far as the, probably need to dance a little more, I think it needs to, give up the flatwork concrete, done, spread down on the wall side of the north wall. Spoke to Mr. Abbot a couple of times, I talked to him again this morning. Ken Kasper, the owner of, or he's representative of Mahai Place Systems, is doing the shelter. He came and signed his contract today, with questions on what poles again, how high for the outlet, it's just the detail stuff, so I had to talk to him. So the, the shelter's been ordered, unfortunately, it needs engineered drawings to be built standard, so it'll take, it used to take less than two weeks, now it takes four to six weeks. So we're hoping for a rush on us to get the shelter, and they won't design and build the shelter, they don't, they don't pre-have the shelters anymore. You have to have, you have to have order, they make them in the factory, and then they shouldn't do it. So looking at six to eight weeks before you even think about getting the shelter here to get it installed.
That's pretty much the last.
And that's how it was, that's how it was. Well, he has to know, because what Jim Nelson's doing in the concrete flatwork in four phases, phase one with this shed, which is about to happen, and then phase two will be the shelter area, phase three will be the monument area towards the north, phase four will be the sidewalk, and he did four floors, that's a lot of concrete. Once phase two was done, because he liked to finish up the stone around those walls, he's done the stone, the first was set up along each pillar on the shelter, he would like to have done it at the same time, it's not gonna happen, we'll be left with some stone around there. So that context, I spoke with Penn yesterday, we verified the names, there are approximately two hundred, and only, only the names of deceased veterans that are in cemetery or from Flatville, very likely Logan, or some kind of justification there, are gonna be on that wall. There'll be a separate dedication for the DSW, and a separate dedication for the auxiliary room, but as far as the actual wall itself, but part of that discussion is, the total amount of names is now around three hundred, you got everybody, that completely fills the wall up, the dorm room, and I can't have that. So we're having to separate it, because we don't want to build them more on this party full, because we get four or five a year, it's not something, depends, you know, this depends. So that was kind of the discussion she and I had, and that was something that we made that decision on, I think it's most justified. Not that everyone won't be, be recognized, but the wall itself will be for the veterans. Even though there's veterans that are lifetime members of the V, similar lives, similar art, there'll be some duplicates, but that's fine, it'll, it'll be clear. But that, and she worked with triple stone, Tammy's her name, and then Noah is the gentleman that engraves the stone, and that's gonna be hopefully highlighted this week, and get the stone started, the stone's already there. The long story short, what I'm getting at is, I'm still shooting for mid-August completion, mostly completion day, but there's many tendencies I can't control. Like Noah said, all of them are very outside. If you have severe weather for a couple of weeks in place, I mean, it's not gonna go through there, so.
I think our names.
The names are an inch, with half inch or maybe an inch spacing, so.
Pretty visible.
Yeah. And then Mike and I worked with Nuko Lighting to redesign the lighting plant, and we stayed a bunch of months for that, so that'll, that'll help out. Bits and pieces, but it's nice because the, the three main contractors, Jim Nelson and Mike Evans and Ken Kasper, working very well together, and they're coordinating timing, it's all about timing now, so. But we'll get quite a bit, at least the surface work and the flatwork will be done, and we will be probably seeing how this is gonna go, it'll be nice in those couple of months, especially next month, I think.
Good.
And again, that with Bob Schreiber, the architect for the senior center, as of today, I still have the final signed contract back from Dola, but as soon as I do, well, Mr. Schreiber's gonna put out a big, big package, and Mary and David sit on a conversation, and he will put that up with his, his daughter works for him too, she's an architect. And we'll get that out to at least three, if not four, probably four contractors that we want to get bids from, which is coordinated along that competitive bid process, that's the way it works. And if all goes well, we could have bids to the board, I don't think in July, probably the first being August. And I don't want to break any ground before harvest day, so that would be good timing.
My goodness.
So we get, depending on the contractor's schedule, we get to get the contractor approved, send that to Dola, and then have them start early September, or late September, then still get quite a bit of work done this fall, on the footers and conduits and wiring and everything else. Because like he said, this is a still building, once he gets the frames, they can work all night long, and so.
Just, yeah, just get that concrete poured before it's four above.
Yeah.
A couple updates from Dave, I talked to him today, like I said, he's gonna take a week off, but he's in his roles, was in high school and college, and he, this is the best time for them, but he's, he's not gonna come, come back tomorrow, so they keep texting. A couple of things out of today, asked him, when is the asphalt specialist gonna go back and do the patching on thirty-two and a half by the silicon, because the road's done? Uh, they got pulled into the big project, but within the next two weeks, they'll have the patching along that stretch completed. Old Town Passing starts Thursday, Schneider paving took a little time to get their bond, and the bond's been approved, and they subbed out a local, actually, Mr. Jamison, a local vendor, to go in there and cut and dig out the patches, and they're gonna fall behind in the patches as we go. That's supposed to start Thursday of this week. And as of today, the well has done the ball fields, and David called it today for me, they should get the final part for the pump on Friday and on Saturday next week, so we'll get a water back on the fields next week probably. So the three major bases can hope works.
Have they been using, well, with the water?
With the moisture, we haven't been irrigating it, but we're actually waiting for it to melt now. We'll probably have to put some water on, I'll talk to Todd tomorrow, we're, we, we cut it to the hydrant, it doesn't fully pressurize the system, but it's enough to keep the stream.
Is it just a matter of basically the electrical? Is the plumbing part all done, do you know?
Pretty much, and they put the pump back on, and then Mike has to go in there and do his job.
Okay.
Last two things, I'm reaching out to Julie Scobie, and she's a representative out of Ray Colorado USDA, Mary's sending some information on their grant programs, I want to meet with her and talk about community facilities programs, they can, they have funding for everything from, and it really depends on your size of the community and reading half of the income, those are your two biggest factors, because others are involved, obviously. But being under a population of five thousand and figuring out median income, there's some grants or loans for street improvements, obviously, plus facility improvements, community garden implementation, so there's a wide range of projects that we can probably talk about. I've never done a USDA program, I've heard horse talks, I'm not sure or not, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue them and talk to Julie, and see if she'll meet me halfway. We can afford, we can, I don't want to drag the break all out. Lastly, Al Mermer is representative from Excel, he did contact me, uh, on Friday while I was gone, he was, he was being in town, looking at those four intersections on Main for the undergrounding program, for the undergrounding plan, and he said by the end of the month that he would have completed a, a design for the undergrounding, and then a cost estimate to provide me, so I can share with you, see how much we can do. Like he confirmed, we have a one, one percent underground franchise fee, we have three, three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars I think built up on that, and that money cannot be used for personal service connections, if those, like the post office, for example, if they need to upgrade the service, that money can't be used, that'd be a hard time. So I said, you know, wrap it up to where what, what can be paid out of the fund versus what the town will call me up, as far as service connection. It'll be by the end of the month, and then what, the lady I met that replaced Mike Tupac Dola, or not Dola, it was Steve Denver, I met her at the management last month, I'm gonna ask her to come back and meet with, I know you were involved in Detroit, and you were involved with, working with the street skate program, have her revisit that, not by anything wrong, but I'd like to have more detail on every block, what every single block looks like, with existing buildings. I mean, some of that looks good, but it's not reality. I mean, we can't just tear down this house on the corner, we have to deal with it. So I think that would be the next step, my proposal, and she's a nice young lady, she seems to, she gave me a business card, just reach out to her a little bit.
She gonna give us the horse drops?
I'm grabbing the side on that. But that's really the nuts and bolts of my report, Penny, any questions that you have? It's a busy time, I mean, the front office staff has been really busy, public works, I've had them do more mowing, painting than they've done in previous years, and they've been out there going every day. We're going to call on co-enforcement, and Scott comes back tomorrow, so he's got lots of projects to do. So all around, just staff, like all around, it's just a busy, which is expected of Jim.
I see your, I saw that you were rolling up there on the right of way.
Yeah, I have David, Dave Doug Calhoun, do some more hours, because our guy is so busy, and he grades for us, but he's also in the mower, grades the mower quite a bit, spraying. I said I went off the ditch on South Main on Grant Avenue, thirty-two and a half, the silicon, I said, I need it all cleaned up. The, how are the young, the college kids gonna be a sophomore? Actually, he's working parts, I worked for the department, I took the other half a week from him, he needs more hours, and he's been painting.
I was gonna ask.
He painted the fence, that Steven Circle is a lot better, on the avenue, off the paint, watching up all the outhouses, or the outhouse, the pump houses and town facilities and just, he needs to freshen up, keep him nice.
Is there any more caps, any possibility of caps, money like sidewalk stuff, like we did last year? And I'm thinking primarily from Old Homestead, trying to connect down Grant.
The thing with, answer your question, I haven't seen any yet, but there hasn't been a call for projects to CDOT on the TAFs program in town, but I anticipate sometime there will be this year. Because I thought we built back in twenty-ten, it was the traffic enhancement funds, and now they just hold all of the TAFs. And I can run an act, act in the board, but it's, it's all those programs in the one.
My acronym does.
That's the case, I'll turn the program, it's pretty simple, actually. The thing with TAFs is that you have to, I know, I'll figure one minute, I'll say something. The thing with the TAFs program is you have to prove to CDOT that it is providing a, a direct access to a public school. So River I don't pull off, and then, and it went sequentially, then the last one, we finished, started, River went down Goodrich to Division, so we completed that connection. So if I do anything, I have to show it's on a school pedestrian route. That's a small town, so it's not too complicated, but the easiest, you know, I'm proposing this for, for the discussion and budget time, but where we cross that Goodrich to Division, start there and come back north, I can justify that. Because like you do, and I say, River, when you did that years ago, that picked up pedestrian traffic out of Old Homestead and Stevens. Part of the justification now, and the second one, is we're figuring about it, but now also we got Reed Kids in part of Old Town. So if we go down Division, back all the way to Reynolds, which we need to have one, because we have Handicap Ranch somewhere on the corners out here, I could probably justify that with how it's out, but we're gonna private set divisions like Rogers, I'm gonna have a hard time, hard time.
Right. Now, if we, if we did, you know, that, that section from Old Homestead down to River really isn't that long. Could, could we conceivably under, can we split those up and do like one down Division, and then have that one, the other one connecting Old Homestead to River? Can we do them separate, or do they have to be contiguous?
They could be separate sections on the same project, from my understanding, but they're, they're not as highly graded.
Okay.
But I'm gonna talk to the board at the end of the month, we're on the twenty-seventh, we're not gonna have a meeting on the twentieth, because it came out, on the twenty-seventh, because we have an extra, it's not an extra Tuesday, but it's a Tuesday this month. I wanna have a, we're announcing a special meeting in the board. Right now, I really don't have any action items, but David's gonna be in his report, we could probably do page those in minutes, but if I happen to get something back from Bob Schreiber early, I can give, provide that to you, whatever case I need, but, or whatever case might come up, because we don't have to be on the force, we're gonna go in a full month, till July eighteenth, I have a meeting.
Oh, I forgot about that.
So if we can't put an action item that needs to be addressed on the twenty-seventh, I do want to do that, but there'll be a very short special meeting, we'll go write the workshop, and I put together a presentation on cap products for this year, what's completed, what's still pending and why, and looking at proposals for the board to start thinking about, for you to give me to prepare for this fall, I mean, it's just on point in my opinion, for projects. I'm gonna talk about the sidewalk over there at Steven Circle, and we'll talk about that on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So I've been making a long list of items that we're talking about.
I've got you, Mike.
What's that?
I've got you, Mike.
Actually, I got that on the list. I just, you know what, we were, neither here nor there, I was out at Brandonus last weekend, and just hogged as could be. And between games, there was a park close by with a, just a tiny little water splash pad, two inches of water, and guess what, the team didn't pull off. Not me, but they did. And it, it's just compliments of that little tiny splash pad, it was just amazing on a hot day, and it didn't take a lot.
Right.
This concrete and CBT water, with a few features, it all did. So anyway, that's on the list. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any new business? Lot with them.
Why doesn't it work? And then you push the button. I don't know, they're, they're.
All right. Make sure. I'm gonna submit that one.